All right, call to order. Eastline Board of Education Special Meeting for the purpose of budget review. Eastline Hall, Upper Meeting Room, March 24th, 5:00. Do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, so we're here tonight to hear the Board of Education budget presentation. So whenever you're ready, we're ready to receive your presentation.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Is this microphone on? Can you guys hear? Is it on?
I don't think it's on.
It doesn't?
Yeah, okay. Maybe we're gonna talk to you in a little more.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks, everyone. I'm Eric Baumann, Eastline Board of Ed Chair, and wanted to give you a brief overview of the budget and give you a few key messages, and then I'll pass it over to Jeff, who'll go through some of the more details. So I think overall, you're gonna see a fairly straightforward budget. The increases are things that are somewhat rollover year to year. A little bit higher increase than you'd probably like to see is similar to what every district, every town is facing, is high utility inflation driving high utility costs, high healthcare costs, and then your normal union contract increases. So that's, when you look at our budget, you'll see a lot of those increases that are driving the 5.77. And then what you'll also see, and Jeff will talk about, is we have taken a lot of action to try to minimize spend. You'll see a slide talking about the grants that we've gotten. You'll see a slide of different expense control processes that we put into place to mitigate costs and save money. So Jeff will talk a little bit more about that to kind of control, to get the number to where it is. The one area that I did want to talk about that's a little different this year that we have put into the budget is there is $250,000 for improvements to our facilities, and it's predominantly geared towards the high school. So as you know, we've spent a lot of money renovating our elementary schools a few years ago. The middle school is still in pretty good shape, although it is 20-plus years old. The high school, we have been in a break-fix mode for as long as I can remember. So the only thing we've really done, we did a renovation, the B Wing 20-something, 20-plus years ago, and since then, we've somewhat been in a break-fix. And if you get a chance to walk through the high school and take a look, you'll see that there's some areas that are in serious need of help, and it's really, our high school should not look like that. If you get a chance to look at the locker room, it's hard to believe that we have a locker room that looks like it does. Our auditorium, we could see where there's some great opportunity to renovate. It's old. If we can renovate some of the space, we can actually utilize it as classroom space as well, so we'd give more lecture hall-type discussion. But right now, the chairs don't have an arm to put a laptop on or things like that. So there's things that we can do with that. And then the library is a library that you'd expect from 30 years ago with books all over and spread out versus having cubicles and places for collaboration and space, and that would really kind of push some of our ability to educate, you know, into the kind of current timeframe of how education works and how we function. Those are just three examples that are probably high on my list that I'd like to see us be able to impact, but there's plenty of others that if you go around, and these all have an impact on culture and climate. And culture and climate is really important. It's one of our key priorities and goals within our Board of Ed goals and within our superintendent goals, and these are all things that can impact that. So I just wanted to highlight that because it's a big number, and it's unusual because it's not something we've had before, but it's something that we'd like to get in so that we, over time, can slowly do these renovations and fixes to help our high school, high school and other high school with a priority of bringing some change from the facility's perspective. So those are my kind of opening comments, and then I want to pass it over to Jeff to bring you through some of the details of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Baumann. Appreciate it. As you mentioned, you know, if anyone's ever interested in taking a tour of the building, you know, Mrs. Hardy would love to lead that, I'm sure. She knows her way around still, so. But no, in all seriousness, we would love to have you come and look around. It does make a difference when you see the things that we're talking about that are really in need of improvement. So we welcome that. The Board of Ed toured recently as well, and that's what Eric is referencing. You all should have received a copy, I see them up there, the bounded budget book that Mrs. Stevens had put together from the Finance Department and sent down. You also have the slides that we're gonna look at, a hard copy, and we're gonna go through those. And then after that, we'll open it up to some conversation about next year's budget. So with no further ado, I'll jump into a couple of our slides. We're starting with our process. Many of you know and have actually taken part in our budget workshop process right out of the gate, before I even come and present the budget with our team to the Board of Education. The first budget workshop happens in November, and then the second in December. So right through the fall, the early fall, the schools and the principals are developing their school budgets, they're getting all that information together, they're sending it up to Central Office, Mrs. Stevens is then putting it together, rolling over contracts and increases. And then by that November 20th workshop, we generally, and at least by the December 14th, December workshop, the second one, we have an increase, percent increase over the current fiscal year. So those workshops are collaborative. We use them to have discussions about needs, about problem areas, about fiscal comments, questions. They've worked well over the years, and it's a great model that we feel works very well for us. So a little bit of history on our budget, for those who aren't familiar, 2022-23, you can see on the left the bar of the 7.03. That was our initial rollover number, which we came out of the gate through the workshop process. In the end, months later, at referendum, we had an approval of a 3.64% increase over the current fiscal year back in 2022-23. Take a look at last year. Last year was a very challenging year budget-wise. We came out of the gate at a 10.19% increase. Inflation had risen, our PESR funds, you know, had dried up, so we had multiple, kind of the perfect storm of budget constraints that landed us at a much higher percent increase. Through working with the town boards, we ended up at referendum receiving a 6.80% increase. So if you look at this current year's work in preparation for next year, the November 20th budget workshop, our rollover was the lowest it's been since 2022-23. We're at 6.89. We worked through between workshops, found some additional reductions, we clean up areas, cross-check all line items. We reduced that down to a 6.08% increase, which I brought to the Board of Education with our team. Board of Ed did some good deliberations, questions, discussions, and they ultimately worked it down to the 5.77% increase over the current fiscal year, and that's where we are at currently and what we're bringing forward. Just some numbers behind that. Our current year total budget, $57,789,852. Proposed at the 6.08 was a $61,301,000. And then by getting it down to the 5.77, we have a Board of Ed proposed total budget of $61,124,675, just to get the percentages and perspective of our total operating budget. You know, for some of you who might not know as well, you know, we are a district of 2,650 students roughly, with well over 600 staff. So there's a lot of moving parts across our district with the number of staff and the number of buildings and students. So how do we get from the 6.08 down to the 5.77? We worked with the Board of Ed and got some recommendations from them. We reduced health insurance. So we went initially, we were at a 10, we put in a 10% increase in health insurance, not knowing where that was going to be or land for next current year. We were very early in the process. We're getting more information from the state, and the number continues to trend in the right direction. So we were at 10, we decided to drop it down to a 6% increase in health insurance. So that saved us $288,000. So right now, in the 5.77, it's at a 6% increase, and there will be room to drop that down further as we work and move forward. Salaries and benefits, we looked at our class sizes, we looked at our elementary schools, and we found that we could maintain the same level of class sizes that were within the Board of Ed guidelines to reduce two positions and not impact anybody's job. So through retirements and attrition, we were able to reduce and eliminate actually two elementary teaching positions. Middle school sports, we added in some dollars for middle school sports. You can see $10,000, increasing the number of offerings that we're providing to students. And then we, you probably read in the paper about our nursing services, and maybe you didn't, but VNA, the Visiting Nurses Association, dropped some of our area regional schools. They're no longer providing nursing services. We were notified of that abruptly and ended up having to scramble a little bit, and we've worked through it nicely, but we need, VNA provided the supervision of our nurses, we need some supervisory work. So we've collaborated with Waterford, and we're going to hire a nursing supervisor that's going to oversee nurses for both districts. So that's providing an opportunity for some collaboration and some savings as well. However, there's an increased cost with, you know, looking at rolling over what was a $630,000 contract into our own. So we put in $60,000 for an increase. We had some savings in contracted services that we found since the presentation to the Board of Ed and the work that we did, and then Mr. Baumann talked about the building improvements, the $250,000 that was put in. Hence, ultimately, that leads to a total increase over the current fiscal year of a 5.77. Fixed expenses, we often show this slide and share this information, so our community is well aware that, you know, majority, 96.05% of our operating budget, the educational operating budget, is wrapped around fixed expenses. You know, it's contracts. We roll over those contracts, and we have increases, salary increases, we have the benefits, we have transportation, and you can see the list, you know, on the right of what that, you know, makes up. And then that little sliver, you know, supplies, textbooks, and software, is what we have to work with as it pertains to being able to reduce, add, et cetera. So, and it's a very small sliver. So we are heavily wrapped around fixed expenses and no real movement in that because of contractual Class size guidelines, I mentioned that when reducing those two elementary teaching positions, we still stayed within the Board of Ed's guidelines of our class sizes. The Board of Ed established these guidelines years back. This is a regulation in our policy. K and 1, we focus on having class sizes of no higher than 18, grade 2 and 3, no higher than 20, and grade 4, no higher than 22. That's at the elementary level. Middle school, a little bit of narrative about the middle school and high school on the right there. In middle school, roughly between 2024, and high school does fluctuate, you know, based on the type of class, number of classes, sometimes we combine classes, but that fluctuates as well. So just to give you a picture of what the Board of Ed is focused on for class sizes, and then to give you our numbers, a lot of numbers on this chart, but if you turn your eyes to the average class side on the far right of the chart, you can see all of those numbers fall within the guidelines of the Board of Education. Now kindergarten always continues to be a little bit of a wild animal, but we have, feel like we have a very good handle on, you know, where our numbers will be with incoming students from across, you know, daycares in town, our preschool programs, et cetera. So our numbers look very good, and again, you can see where the reductions are of the staffing positions, the one at Niemex Center and one at Flanders. And again, leaving our class sizes where they need to be. So you're being fiscally responsible and always monitoring that and ensuring that we have our teachers, you know, and our students and our families understanding that, you know, we care about class sizes and we want to make sure that we're providing the best opportunities for kids. Middle school and high school, Mrs. Hardy, here's those numbers for middle school and high school. You can see current year enrollment count, 695 students, projected next year, 697 students. So only a two-student difference. So no, there's no changes at the middle school in total enrollment. At the high school level, we've had a bubble that's gone through the district. It was at the middle school a few years back, it's up at the high school now, so you see a little bit of a dip in students projected, 930 down to 903. Now again, these are moving targets. We don't know who or which families might move in or, you know, or move out. It changes, and we take our final enrollment counts on October 1st. So that's where, you know, our high school numbers. And again, our total population, 2,650, and really, as we look out and we've used, you know, projections that we received to 2030, we sit still right around that number. We creep up a little bit closer to the 2,700 mark. So it's good, stable, and not a lot of fluctuation, which, you know, causes issues. So things that we needed to add into next year's budget to provide additional supports, which were important, that we had a lot of conversations, and some of these came up during the budget workshops that I mentioned. Number one was adding a special education teacher at the middle school. Our special education numbers continue to climb. We're not the only district, it's happening across the state. I'll show you a prevalence rate slide in just a minute as to what percent of our total population of students receives special education services. But our special education, we needed an additional teacher at the middle school to help offset caseloads. We also incorporated in a board-certified behavioral analyst, a BCBA, a stipend position to support our current BCBAs, and also, rather than contracting out, we've hired our own, we're planning to hire our own part-time BCBA. So the contracted services offsets by the elimination of $50,000 there. Multi-language learners, students who have multi-language learners come from other countries, those numbers continue to climb. Back in 2019, we were sitting around 53 students that we were providing English language or what we now call multi-language services to. That number currently is sitting around 108. So we've more than doubled our population since 2019 of students requiring those services. So hence, the need to add in another multi-language learner teacher, that will be the third one. So we'll have, we have two currently. We have one at the elementary, one at the middle school, one at the high school level. We added in some team leader stipends. We have regular teachers, like a grade-level teacher, for instance, who oversees the grade, perhaps does work, you know, is a conduit for professional development, whatever it might be. They get a stipend. We're bringing in some of those stipends for social workers, psychologists, you know, our speech-language pathologist group. Middle school coaching stipends, we put those in as we've added, I mentioned adding in some additional sports at the middle school, and then we have 5,316 for two marching band instructor stipends. They were using money that they raise, and if you've been in the back part of our park and at the high school, they collect cans every other Saturday, and they were using that money. We felt it very appropriate that, you know, our operating budget covers that, and they can use the money they generate for other things such as equipment. Talked about that special education prevalence rate, here's the slide. So you can see since 2018 and 19, Eastline Public Schools as well as the state, and what the trend has been. Back in 1819, you know, our prevalence rate was lower than the state, we were at 14%. So 14% of our total population of students were receiving special education services. Jumped to 2022-23, we're higher than the state, we're at 19% now. So that equates out to over 500 students that receive services under special education and warrants it. We have a lot of students that, you know, have need, and, you know, we were lucky enough as a district to provide, you know, the appropriate services for students. That state percent, 16.7, is actually a little bit higher now, Kim. That's probably upwards, again, this is last year's data, but...
Yeah, I think it's upwards of 18.
So the states, yeah. So the state is not far behind. We're right, and every other district too is high, continues to climb.
And nationally.
And nationally as well. Yeah, thank you. Grant funds, want to make mention of grant funds. So Mr. Baumann alluded to this. We worked very hard and, you know, we, us, the district and the town, we don't have a grants coordinator, somebody who focuses solely on grants. We do it ourselves. Our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Basiano, Mrs. Davis, staff members across our district, we have worked hard to reach out and achieve grants, and we've done a great job of it. Last year, we only amassed a little over $100,000 in grant funding. We are, this year, up to just over $1 million, $1,012,000 in grant funding that we have accrued. That's helped to provide services, professional development, programs, some staffing. For instance, we're able to hire an additional psychologist at the high school, a three-year grant, which is fantastic, providing more mental health services, you know, to students. So we've worked extremely hard to bring additional grant funds to offset operating budget costs, and we'll continue to work at that. A lot of those dollars too fall under our pathways programs. You've probably heard about some of our pathways programs, and if not, we're working very hard to provide students who may or may not be going to college with work opportunities, connections with EB, for instance. We have two students that have already been hired, and when they graduate high school, they're going right to EB to start work. So those are the connections that we've been able to, some of the connections we've been able to make. Shared services and cost mitigation efforts. You know, we also continue to work hard to share services, one being with the town first. Mrs. Stevens has worked very hard with Joe Berga around utilities. They locked in a solar rate, which has been helpful, that will drop our utilities costs. You know, it's not on here, but we have shared plowing services. Luckily, we really haven't had to use it much the last two years, which is a good thing, but we share plowing services with the town, with Snow. Financial software, Munis is coming on board. I know Kevin and Mariana have spent a lot of time and in a lot of meetings getting trained in Munis, so that's gonna be a joint project together. I talked about the nursing supervisor. We could have gone off and had to hire our own nursing supervisor at potentially $100,000 or more, and we're sharing that with Waterford, so that will be a cost savings there. We provided the mail courier for the town for many years, we continue to do that. So the individual travels around and delivers the mail, you know, that's our employee. We cover that, so again, a shared service. And the bottom two are unique and fairly new. We're really working to branch out and promote various modes of educating our students. The first one on the right there, the regional high school course collaboration, this is another collaborative effort that both Waterford, Lime Old Lime, and Eastlime have partnered on, where we have had the opportunity to have one of our teachers become trained and be able to teach an EMT course at the high school. Not many of them across the state. That individual started it this year, and we now have, we've branched out to the other districts, hey, you want to pay some tuition and send some students who might be interested? So we've got four Waterford students and four Lime Old Lime students who are going to come and take that course next year. And it works schedule-wise because the course is so rigorous, it runs every day for a year. Typically, our high school courses run every other day, so it runs every day for a year. So those are tuition dollars that we're taking in that go right to the town. Any tuition dollars we receive go to the town. So we're raising some dollars, we're providing a regional opportunity for students. To the left there, the Regional Remote Learning Project is a further expansion of that idea, and I won't get into great detail because it's pretty complex, but we are in a hub with Learn that we formulated and worked on over the last year and a half. There's seven districts, Eastlime being one of them, where we pay a minimum amount of money into the hub, and then each district that's participating of the seven, we recruit teachers who want to teach courses remotely. So for instance, we don't have Latin at the high school any longer. Waterford still has Latin. We might want to say, hey, Waterford, we have some students that want to take Latin, we can do it if the Latin teacher would like to teach a course in the evening through the Regional Remote Learning Project. So we would pay the teacher, or Waterford would pay the teacher, and then we would pay into the hub and pay for the classes that a number of students have partaken in. So it's getting off the ground. That's our plan, you know, for next year, to begin offering some courses. And there's a lot of, Old Sabre is a district that's part of this, for instance, and Old Sabre is a smaller district. They really are gonna be interested in what Eastlime has to offer for classes and coursework as well as maybe Waterford. So we're excited about this opportunity and providing a greater outreach of potential coursework for students that will be honored and part of their credits that they receive. So stay tuned on more of that. And then, lastly, and Dr. Lund is here, capital improvements. Typically, in the past, we haven't really referenced capital improvements in our slide deck, but we really wanted to make it a point to talk and pinpoint capital improvements. We had met with our first selectman and Kevin and talked about some of these items that are some big-ticket items, but really need to get done. Roof projects, number one. Let me just start with the elementary schools. Mr. Baumann mentioned that our elementary schools, you know, were renovated, and we spent quite a bit of dollars, $37.5 million on those three schools about five, six years ago. Well, we did one roof on that project. Flanders School was the only roof. It was eligible for reimbursement, and then we get just over 40% reimbursement. The other two schools were not eligible yet, and they weren't quite ready yet. We're at a time now, we're finding, especially Lily Bee, and you'll see in the budget book, there is actually a picture of Lily Bee's roof and where the water infiltration is. It's all the red that you'll see on that picture. Those roofs need to be replaced, they're eligible for reimbursement, which again is just over 40%. So we have those two roofs, as well as the Aquatic Center roof, that needs to get done. The Aquatic Center is approximately 20, it's 24-years-old now. If you've been, is another place, if you'd love to come visit, we would encourage you to come in and look up and see. There's stuff falling from the ceiling, rust particles, the pilings are starting to deteriorate, it needs a roof replacement. So that's another one, and that is also eligible for 40% reimbursement. So those are our roof projects. The other major one on here is the turf and track field replacement. The turf field has a life of 10 to 15 years. We are in, Chris, year 11 or year 12, year 12 of the turf field. I don't know if you've driven by there, weekends, evenings, day, even when, you know, if it wasn't raining today, you know, yesterday, because kids are out using it all the time, community's out using it all the time. So it's gotten its wear, it's done well, but it needs to be replaced. So that, and that's a pretty big ticket item, but an item that needs to get done. I won't go through all the other ones, you can see them there. Dr. Lund is here, if we want to talk about, you know, the window or door replacements and the phases that we're in with those, HVAC replacements as well. I think that's about it for capital items, and I'll thank you for your time listening to these slides, and we'll open it up for any questions that you might have pertaining to what we shared, as well as our budget book. Yes?
So just on the capital improvement, you said the roof is eligible for reimbursement, 40% reimbursement, is that from the state?
Yes, yeah, through the Department of Administrative Services, yes.
So do you put out the money first and then they pay you 40% of whatever it costs?
Yeah, it's like a, yeah, it's like a reimbursement. What we don't spend, basically, yeah, they reimburse.
Okay, so then my next question is the track and turf replacement. Would you be replacing it with another, like, turf, or would you go back to the regular grass?
No, it would be replaced with a new turf field. If we tried to do grass, it would be quite expensive, and the amount of use that that gets, the wear and tear, you'd have to shut it down for periods of time because it would just, you couldn't regenerate enough growth with the grass. And top of it, you know, used all winter long, that would tear it up for the spring. So we would be looking to replace the turf field and then the track, resurfacing the track, not ripping the track out, correct? We're just resurfacing it.
Yeah, I was just concerned, just because I've been, you know, reading articles saying that the turf fields are not safe for the kids anymore, based upon what is the plastic or whatever it is that they make it out of. So that was where my question was coming from. Let me just kind of...
Well, I'll follow up on those while you're flipping through.
Okay.
So is there a priority order here on the capital improvements?
All of these are priority, and in next year's, in the capital plan for next year.
Would it be possible for the Board to go back and look at some priority order? Obviously, it's a pretty big ticket item, and so I'll follow up with the turf field. When that, do we have a, do we have a money account for that?
There is a money account at the town, and I believe, there is an approximate dollar amount that was accumulated many years ago. I think it's, yeah, it's not, it's not much. It's under $100,000.
Okay, because when that was first put in, this was presented to us, that there would be advertising from local businesses who would contribute to that, and that also any outside usage of the field, there would be a fee for. Now I've seen school buses from other districts... Now, I've seen school buses from other districts out on the field practicing with their marching bands, and I'm sure we're not getting any income from that, which was supposed to be...
Well, it's a rental. The track, any outside organization that uses it, there's a rental fee for it to be used, yes. But I just...
And that's going into that special account?
That goes into, no, that goes into our sports account. I can't speak to 13, 14 years ago as to what you were told, unfortunately, as to, I mean, we are working harder at doing advertising and raising dollars, but it hasn't been going into that account.
Well, we did, for a short, for a period of time, we did have local businesses that put signs up and paid for those. And it seems to me, I wasn't aware that we had a number of outside groups that were continuing to pay for the use of the field.
Yeah, yeah.
So it seems that that should be reflected in these figures as to how much money is in that account, which should be credited to you.
Yeah, and we are getting back to that recruitment of dollars, and we'll take, for instance, the baseball field. We're planning to put in a new scoreboard. That's been funded through that process right there. You will start to see signs that will go and hang on the outside of the baseball field fence for donations that we have received. So we're getting back to that, same thing, the process with a new scoreboard table for our basketball team in the gym, same process. So we're working on those efforts, yes.
Okay, so the reduction of the two elementary positions, that's leaving a class size of 17, I believe you told us, but after those, what are those, are those positions just eliminated, or is that money reassigned to something else?
Nope, those are eliminated, saving, that's a savings, because we are no longer filling those two positions. So that's a savings. You can see the savings on the slide right here. If you take a look right where it says salaries and benefits, the second one down?
Yes.
That's a reduction of $191,884.
I do have some concerns with that. It seems to me with the number of students that are coming into our elementary school that are not at the same entry level of skills that we have experienced in the past, and starting out with a class size of 17 before we even have new students coming in at the beginning of the year. So I just wanted to make sure that there's some reserve money someplace that could alleviate that system if need, that situation if need be.
Okay, yeah, no, we appreciate your thoughts on that.
I personally would not want to handle a group of 70...
You'll come back and teach kindergarten?
In kindergarten and first grade, no.
Understandable.
All right, I'll let somebody else, and then I have some other questions, but I'll give somebody else a chance.
I have a few questions. This is my first budget cycle for Board of Ed, so I know it's a yearly thing, but I'm curious about the long-term trends of population decline, just by looking at the numbers in the middle school and high school enrollment. It looks like the numbers decreased by about a fifth over the course of the four years. I imagine it's going to keep going on like that track for a while. Has there been any thought about prioritizing needs based on declining enrollment?
Well, I wouldn't say we're declining. There's variations, and again, that bubble that's been going through, but again, if you look at, and trend-wise, this is, April 1st will be the start of my 10th year. We have never gone lower than 2,600 students, and we've been no higher than like 2,750. So within that 10-year time, that's where we've sat, and we haven't really moved. Again, the bubbles go through and some waves, but, and again, projected out to 2030, we're supposed to start to climb back up a little bit, but no higher than the 2,700, 2,800 max. I think I have a slide on that. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go on, I'm looking for that.
The high school numbers include Salem, so when you're looking at high school versus middle school, you're adding in the 200. So I don't know if that's what you're looking at, seeing a decline of 20%, but we don't, yeah, there's, we're kind of relatively flat.
That does help. And actually, while you're up, I'm sorry, would you mind repeating your three priorities? You said locker room, auditorium, and what was the third?
The library.
Library.
Yep.
Thank you. Let me see if I can find that slide. Here it is.
Likewise, has there been any trend towards per pupil allotment going up?
What's that?
Per pupil allotment, is there any kind of trend going up with that?
Um, that number has risen some, yeah, our per pupil dollar amount. I forget where we are. We're roughly around 19, 19,000.
Nineteen and change.
Yeah, 19 and change, yeah.
If our pupil, basically, our student population is relatively, has been relatively flat, and we're seeing, as you have staff increases and everything, we're trying to mitigate those costs, we go, you know, how much they're going up. But if they're going up with a flat student population, the math is going to be where our per pupil costs are going to go up, which is what you're seeing consistently across the state with, as we talked about inflation, utility costs, healthcare costs, and then just our contractual obligations. But we do try, that's where, as Ms. Hardy was talking about, the two, taking the two teachers, that we're trying to look for opportunities for savings to mitigate those costs as the populations go down.
Okay, so I'm going to follow up on that. Can you give us the per pupil cost for elementary versus high school?
No, you can't break it out. Yeah, it's just one, one per pupil cost for each student.
Figured for K through 12? I'm just wondering, what does it cost to educate a student in this town from K through 12?
K through 12, we're, what's our...
It's 19,000 and change.
Yeah, we'll look at, it's just, it's over, just over 19,000, but under 20,000, so it falls within that realm.
And when is the next contract due to be renegotiated with Salem?
Oh, we've already negotiated. It's 20 years out. We did it three years ago, so that won't change. It's a 5% increase. So yeah, that's locked in.
5% increase each year?
Each year, and that's locked in, yeah.
All right, well, to switch gears, I noticed that...
And Roseanne, just in your book too, there's the tuition dollar amount and the change fluctuation for Salem too, if you want to reference on the revenue, the revenue side.
I think I missed that page.
Yeah, it's just, yep, it's in there if you, you can see that tuition.
Now, I noticed that all of the budgets reflect a decrease in electricity, and every source, I assume that's who we're getting, who are we getting our power from?
We have a bid, so we get our, there's two components to the bill. So our supply portion is, I bid that every couple of years. So last time I did it, I coordinated it, so we would end our contract at the same time the town ended their contract. So Joe and I did a bid this year. So actually, our rate, the last time I did it, was 12.929, and when we locked in a couple weeks ago, it's 9.9 and change. So we have a significant decrease in our kilowatt hours. It does not start until November of 2024, so we will still have about five months of bills at the higher 12.929. So that's why you're not seeing, you know, when you read about ever source, we're not getting our supply from ever source. We go out and bid.
All right, well, that's good news. The rest of us will be carrying on.
Yes, indeed.
All right, so what is the date of our contract ending with Salem?
Well, we are in, what, year three of a 20-year, I don't even, so if we calculated it out, 17 years from now?
And is their tuition cost figured on usage of all the facilities and access to all the after-school activities and everything, and they provide their own busing?
They do. They cover the cost of their busing, yep. And when that agreement was, years ago, was put together, these are on the time the pool was being constructed.
I think it was.
It was, that was part of what the overall cost to the Salem students were, or what was, that was part of it, yes. So I don't know exactly what's in, how they broke it down facility-wise, but remember there, it would have just been for the high school, because obviously, the kids are just going to the high school.
So their tuition rate is set, and it's...
With a gradually increased each year.
Which does not necessarily reflect the new expenditures that are being requested for capital improvements.
Not what's in this budget, currently, the $250,000. Now, if we do larger renovation projects, it might be a conversation that we have with Salem. Not sure where we are with that right now, but at some point, you've got a portion of the high school where you were in, which is 53 years old, hasn't been renovated. So we're going to have to be having some conversations down the very short road.
Well, that was built to last for all time.
It's not a good job, that's for sure.
All right, I'll give the floor to someone else, ask questions.
Well, I'll ask a few. Yeah, I noticed that too about the electricity, and I was quite impressed with that, what you were able to craft those savings. That's wonderful. I did notice also that it looked like some of the maintenance costs were reduced on some of the line items, and I was wondering if, you know, are we deferring maintenance to achieve an acceptable budget, or how is that being achieved?
Do you want to talk about anything with maintenance that...
Well, like some of the, yeah, I saw some line items where it looked like the maintenance expense was, seemed to be reduced. I'm seeing a financial...
Yeah, come on, come on, if there's anything specific that, I mean, we have money in there for projects, we've got things that we need to get done, but...
Well, I'll just take Lily Bee Haynes. Let's see, tab number three, Lily Bee Haynes. Let's look at mine, 431, and it shows a reduction in preventative maintenance of 14%. I just, you know, maybe it's showing up somewhere else in the budget, but I get concerned when we, you know, if that's what we're cutting.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that go on, and obviously, percentages can be deceiving when you're only dealing with a couple of dollars. So some things have been consolidated in different line items. In some areas, I've reduced maintenance, but added in more for unexpected repairs because we have newer equipment, so we know that our preventive maintenance costs are, you know, after a couple of years now, dealing with the elementary schools and the renovations, we have a better sense of what the preventive maintenance costs are, so we can reduce that a little bit. But we're also finding now, things are, they're five years, seven years, things are starting to break a little bit, not a lot, but those costs, you know, we now have to start accounting for that more in the repair side than the PM side, so.
I suspect that might have been, but I just wanted to be sure, I wanted to at least address it.
No, we're not doing any less maintenance.
Yeah, no, you know, with newer equipment, sometimes you achieve economies of, you know, there's a lot of 20-year-old cars driving around.
Oh, sure.
And, you know, where in the past, you could get five years. The, on the nursing, sharing with Waterford.
Yeah.
So is that like a nurse manager, and then that manager oversees staffing, nurse coverage, or is it actually a person that goes between, one person that goes between the several schools? How does it really work?
So it's a supervisor of nursing services, split 50-50, so their week would basically be split between the two districts. They would be responsible for sub-coverage for nurses. If we need a sub, they might be covering for a day or a portion of a day. They're ensuring that trainings that the nurses need to go through are happening, and they're overseeing. So things of that nature is going to be, you know, the bulk of their responsibilities. We've created a job description. It's a new position, it's kind of a unique position, and we're just excited for the opportunity, again, to collaborate with another district.
So the opportunity was presented, so they actually would be responsible for staffing and hiring nurses in the specific school?
Exactly.
So they have a general contractor to...
Exactly, and they would report to our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Davis in East Lime, and the Director of Student Services in Waterford, to work on, you know, anything that they feel or deem is important.
Has there been any interest, if you know, from other school districts that, of course, they're all facing the same problem, that were serviced by the...
We did have some discussions, Groton and New London, are two districts that were going through the same thing. Much larger districts in East Lime and Waterford, so we felt, you know, there was a time we talked, should we try and share, you know, all four districts? Be way too thin. I think we would not get the benefit of, you know, what we need. So we felt it was really ideal with, you know...
Good pairing.
Yeah, it's a good pairing with Waterford, same amount of schools, roughly same amount of nurses, so we thought it was ideal.
Good work. That's it for me for the moment.
On the, so are the funds, do you have any of those funds left?
We don't. We used them all up, yes. Yep, all done at the end of last year.
Were some of those funds used to hire personnel?
Back when we had them, there were some personnel positions, but again, we had worked through all that, so again, all of our funds were done at the end of last year. We're not using any of those funds for staffing positions this year.
Okay, all right. I am on tab number two, and code 119, salaries for technology department staff increase due cost of living adjustment. I'm curious as to why those individuals would get cost of living adjustment as opposed to other groups?
One object code number...
Object code 119, salaries for technology department staff increase due to cost of living adjustment.
That's their, every, that would be, they're not a contract, they don't have a union, they're just by contract, so just as every other contract has an increase typically built into it, they would also get what all of our unaffiliated group would get. So we're projecting that to be, the board will vote on it at some point in a few months, but that was our prediction.
So that aligns, Roseanne, with, you know, what, for instance, our teachers, paras, what their increases through the contracts are. So Marianne's speaking too, we put in the 2.95% increase for them as well. So they get an increase like our paraprofessionals, our teachers, et cetera.
Okay, so the paraprofessionals are unionized?
Yes.
And so you would assume, so we would figure that cost of living increases were included in what they got through collective bargaining?
It's all part of the collecting, collective bargaining process, yes, in negotiation.
And so these people, or contracted people, are not getting the same percentage increase that the others are, are they?
Yeah, there's more...
There's step increases, there's step increases related, so our paras have steps, step increases, so we...
It's a combined, yeah, it's a combination of increases.
The paras are not getting, one para is not getting a 5.67% increase.
No.
It's a matter of the steps that we have, which are lower steps, so as they move up steps, and then we also, which isn't included in the budget we got this year, there were some additional stipends that were paid to paras, so that caused an increase as part of their collective bargaining agreement. They get a stipend based on certain additional duties that they have to do for our students with special needs. So it's a combination of all of that.
And then I also noted some behavioral analyst positions, and do those people have direct contact with students?
They do, yes.
Okay. They have a caseload?
Yeah, yeah.
And are those, are they available at every level?
Yes.
Let's go. Thank you. I did want you to know that I was in the middle of a mystery novel and had to put that aside in order to do that.
This is much more interesting, Roseanne, than a mystery novel. Much more interesting.
Well, part of this is a mystery, so a continuation.
We try not to make it a mystery, but, yeah, Donna, or...
Go ahead.
Okay, so fixed expenses, you have 96.05%. Can you tell me what that is in dollars?
So, Mary, do we have a dollar amount? Yeah, yeah.
Just so I understand it.
Yeah.
Percentage is kind of a fuzzy.
Okay, give us, yeah, give us one sec. Let's come back to it, Mary Ann, and we can ask Don. Yeah, we can come, we can come right, yeah, go ahead, and then by the time, yeah.
Go.
Okay, sorry, just last one. You're talking about the children in kindergarten, and I want to know, do they need to be five years old when they start kindergarten now? Is that the rule?
There's, yes, there, there, yes. However, there is a waiver process that the state has implemented. So, a parent can request, if their child is not five years old now by September 1st, they can request the opportunity to, through an evaluation or screening process that the child would go through, that we would allow the child into the district, even if they're not of age, because they're demonstrating through the screening process the skillset to be able to start kindergarten.
And who does that evaluation process?
Our teachers would do the screening process, and then the principal, per the state mandate, new state mandate, is the ultimate decision-maker on that. And we plan on screening in May, and then we'll see, we might have some students who don't make it at that point. We'll talk and work with parents, and we'll see where we're at as we roll into the...
Yeah, because there was, I just remember when my kids were younger and the teachers literally sat there and said, you know, there's some kids who are, start kindergarten at four, five, six, there's like three different eight years, and it's a huge gap.
It is, the developmental gap.
It's too much, you know?
Yeah, it's quite large.
So, that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm set.
Good question.
Go, Don.
Or, and we have that number.
Okay, thank you.
58 million.
Wait, hang on.
58 million, 709,756.
Okay, so now I'm gonna ask you for the other number because...
Yep, 2,414,919.
So, the 58 million is the fixed?
Correct.
And basically, you're asking for the 2,414,919 dollars. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Who thinks she's here, huh?
That's why we have her here, Don. She knows the numbers.
Holy cow. I'm assuming, yeah, I see a million dollars for the grants. I'm assuming, nice job, I'll ask you another follow-up question to that. How are they dispersed throughout the budget? Where would I see the grant money?
So, they're not part of the operating budget, because we have to account for them separately, but if you look at tab four.
Thank you.
It'll list all the grants.
So, what's some of that money that just...
So, we account for that in a separate fund, it's at the town also, similar to our operating budget, but we have to account for federal and state grants separately from our operating budget. And then we report to the state individually. We have to provide a budget to them and then report to them on a quarterly basis.
And you can see that number is much different. We have a lot of other grants that we receive from the state that aren't part of that, that million that we, you know, we referenced.
Okay. With our locals, say, southeast in Connecticut, how are you, relative performance for those grants, the grant obtainable that you get versus other schools?
That's, that's tough to gauge, only because, well, so, some of our formula grants and those are based on our socioeconomic demographics, and then some of those other grants in Spaziano can explain more. We don't know, because we don't know who applied for the grants, because they're competitive. So, so we, so to...
So, stop public information.
How we compare to Waterford, if they didn't apply for the grant and we did, we don't necessarily know that we got the grant, because we did something more than another district, it's just that we applied for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I was heading for if one school was consistently getting 2.5 million to 3.5 million, and do they have a grant writer on staff?
Oh, gotcha.
Versus, we don't.
Yeah.
We're doing it in-house. So, I'm just saying the advantageous of maybe bringing that person on to get the more money. But, and naturally, I would like to know relative for performances, stock market, everything, just how are we doing, you know, as far as grants, so.
Okay, back to me. I'm on page 21, and I noticed a footnote at the bottom, which is under notes and assumptions, that we are scheduled to be receiving a decrease for, scheduled to begin receiving a decrease in ECS funding. We're held harmless until 2025. Do we have any idea what the impact of that's going to be after our brief pause?
Yeah, Roseanne, if you look at page 26, I included, in that same tab, I included the estimate of what would happen once they start.
Now, what is the, what is the rationale that has been given for our funding to be, to be decreased?
The rationale was, several years ago, they stated that the ECS grant, and we'd have to talk more specifically to the people at the state, but the premise is that the ECS grant was not being paid out according to the formula that they had intended to pay it out, and that districts were being overpaid. So, the idea was that they would start paying districts according to that formula. I can get more information, but that was the gist of it, Roseanne, it started sometime about...
Okay, well, I'm just wondering if there is any plea bargain that we want to try to negotiate with the state to, or at least have our local representatives argue for us that this is money certainly, with the demands for affordable housing and things, that this is something that is really necessary for, that I think we should start some kind of a campaign, especially as this is election time coming up for state legislators?
Yes, I've talked to representatives. Hopefully, there'll be some changes at the state level. That's both for educational cost-sharing dollars, so we don't lose that money in the coming years, as well as our excess costs, the grant monies we receive back for special education students. That percentage has declined some. So, every year, special education and state dollars is always a topic, and, you know, for our legislators, and fully funding special education, bless you.
Especially that we know in advance that this is going to be decreasing, whether we should put pressure of this board, your board together, and do some, get some formal statements written about the effect that this will have on our budget and our ability to provide services for our students.
We are already providing that pressure, having those conversations for sure. It's a lot of money that's supposed to decrease over the years ahead, so.
I have a few questions. Kind of more philosophical one. What do you suppose the future of library services will look like going forward? You talk about renovating the high school library. What place will it have in the school function and school community?
Well, ideally, you know, take our library, for instance, right now, it's a very, like the high school, it's a very large, you know, open space, rows of books. We would love to see, I personally would love to see a space that has more glassed-off rooms and collaborative areas for students to begin engaging in work projects, work activities, assignments that their teachers have sent them off to do. They all have laptops, they're all collaborating through their laptops and the projects that they're working on. That ideally would, would be a piece of, you know, the change in a library setting. That goes along too with our auditorium, you know, Mr. Bound mentioned the auditorium. We have two, if you've been, you've been in our auditorium, if you're down at the stage facing back out, you see the left and the right wing of the auditorium. Replacing those seats simply to have new chairs with armrests that come up, that students could put their laptops on and actually work off of, rather than their laps, which won't work, we could have lecture-style halls for students to be engaging in larger college-type, you know, the experience of a college-type class in those, those areas. So, that's a great opportunity, and that's something we're looking to try and do.
Okay, more nuts and bolts. You said ARPA funding is totally...
Yeah, we don't have any, yep. Most districts that receive more money than we did are finishing it up this year. So, they're looking at next year's budget now, and there's a lot of increases that are much higher because they're, they're struggling with the loss of ARPS or funds. We used all of ours up.
I saw ARPA right to read in the school.
Oh, that, yeah, that's, yeah, the remaining, the remaining dollars that were...
They'll use the 82,000 to support the adoption of the new literacy program.
Different set of, yeah, a different set of funds that are under ARPS, yeah.
And the high dose tutoring grant will support those some leftover ARPA.
But that's, that was state offerings that they provided in addition to what districts received. Like, we received was a total of 1.7 million in ARPS or funds altogether. Yeah, pieces over the course of two different years, yeah. Then the state had come out, again, with additional grant opportunities, where, and at least talking about the...
Yeah, I mean, the ARPA, the 82,000 was given in response to the mandate associated with the adoption of the new literacy program. So, all of the districts got a certain number of money, money based on the size of our district. And then, the high dose tutoring grant was a competitive grant that we applied for and got, and received.
That's part of that million.
Is it in response to the science of reading program?
The 82,000 was, was in response to the...
Is there, I asked too many questions about the future perhaps, but is there any talk of a science of math or a science of...
That's a good question.
I mean, the high dose tutoring model is sort of that, looking at a very specific math tutoring model that is small in group numbers, it's high dosage tutoring, so 30-minute sessions at least three times a week with students in groups of no parent at work, with highly qualified tutors and a, you know, high-quality curriculum.
Is there any chance of ARPA funds for that in the future?
We are in the midst of utilizing ARPA funds. We received 498,000 to implement a high dose tutoring grant program that will take us to the end of December next year. And we are partnering with a vendor who's supporting the tutors and the curriculum for that.
To get an additional amount of money on top of what we originally had got, received and used up for ARPS or funds. So, but that was a grant, yeah.
My last question.
And the school mental health program.
That, that was a school psychologist at the high school.
That was a competitive grant we applied for to add an additional mental health support provider. But those, so they say ARPA, they're the state's ARPA money, and they designated them for things like, they say this is a high dose tutoring grant, this is a mental health specialist grant. So, our original lump of money we had decision-making power over, these are state-level ARPA funds that they're saying, please support students in these areas and use our leftover, you know, ARPA money.
And those, those are still available, not readily perhaps as they once were, but...
Well, they, yeah, they have to use, there's time periods. There's talk legislative about trying to extend, but I don't know where that stands as of right now. But there was leftover state money, which they were trying to, to offer to districts.
Okay. My final question is just, I think in trying to search for priorities, I noticed that the Lily B. Haynes diagram was included for the moisture.
Yes.
I did not see that for Niantic Center School, or I guess it'd be silly to do that in the Aquatic Center, but the whole thing's moist. But is that a priority? Is that why that one was included and the others were not?
Yeah, Lily B. is a priority over Niantic Center roof-wise. We had the, we did the moisture chest. Do we do a moisture chest at Niantic?
We knew we didn't need to conduct a Niantic test.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
We already knew that the roof had failed at Niantic Center, so we didn't conduct the test.
So, we just, we have a past kind of map full of red also. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I, I think that I didn't complete my thoughts here on the tuition. So, now I found the page in the booklet. So, we know that the formula for tuition for Salem and East Lime students are set by contract. Now, what about students who come in as tuition students who are not from Salem?
Mm-hmm.
There's a flat rate for that?
There is, yes.
And does that rate vary between an elementary student and a high school student?
Nope.
It's a flat rate?
It's one set, flat rate.
And can you tell us what the current rate is?
That one's roughly around 20, yeah, it's around a little over 20,000.
Per year?
Per year.
Per student, per year, correct. And we have had students in the past that have paid tuition, however, we don't currently have any that are coming from another district for the full school experience. Now, I mentioned the Waterford and Old Lime EMT course, so that's one class, so we have a tuition rate of $3,000 that we're charging each student. So, four students coming from both Old Lime, Lime and Old Lime and Waterford, that's $24,000 in tuition money coming to the town.
Let's get some more class, like, as all the courses go.
Well, it's just, it's a, it's an expansive opportunity, you know, we're excited to see where it grows and be able to do those, you know, those things, and again, offer more for kids, which is what it's all about.
And then my, I think this is my last question. Adult education, are we consulting or consorting with other towns in the area to do that?
We don't have a lot, we, it occurs, we don't have a lot of conversation, you know, with them, at least I haven't, I don't know if they've reached up here.
Our pipeline is connected to Norwich, right, yeah?
Yeah, Norwich is the hub, basically.
Is our, is our, is our regional adult education, we get, we pay them for, they send us a rate each year that we pay for adult education, and then the state provides a small grant. I think we're gonna get about 16,400 this year to offset that cost.
Yeah.
And students with special ed needs, education needs, we do not do anything for them postgraduate?
Up until the age of 22.
And how are those services provided?
Kim, you want to talk a little bit about AIM, sir, minute, just briefly about the program itself?
Yeah, we have a program located at the middle school. We use space there since there, and it is, we call it AIM, Abilities in Motion. And once students leave high school, when their credit complete, but they have continuing needs under the Individuals with Disabilities Act, we're required now in the state of Connecticut to keep them till the school year when they, when they turn 22, to the end of that school year. So, they're working on pre-vocational skills, they're working on leisure skills, they're working on independent living skills, they go out into the community, they have jobs around the school campus. We have a couple of kids working at Anytime Fitness, we have kids who go over to the library, we have kids here at Town Hall, right, yes. And so, they're just working on developing into, you know, skills to help them be successful beyond their school experience, you know, related to their disabilities.
It's a great program.
Yeah.
I had a question. On, on page 31 of, let's see, section five?
Yep.
And there's a graph that describes the performance of the AstroTurf. And I was just trying to understand it, and I think maybe I finally figured it out. So, it shows G-max, is that like G-force if you're landing on the...
Is that about the impact testing, Chris?
Impact, is that a measure of impact?
Yeah, so that's a measure of, well, it's a gravitational impact, I think, is what the G stands back, so you're exactly right, it's an impact, and...
And then it's related to infill depth?
Right, so...
It looks like they're inversely related, if the lower the infill depth, the higher the G-max?
Generally speaking, right, except there is, you know, some of it's related to compaction to some areas. Like, if you were to look at the middle of the field, you know, we, we add a lot to that during football season, so you may have a bigger base there, but it's so compacted because everybody runs up and down the middle field all the time.
Some places that have more compression than...
Exactly.
And, and it looks like, if I'm understanding it right, the, the standard is that the G-max cannot exceed 200.
Correct.
And according to this graph, if I'm looking at it right, there are certain areas that, you're already up to 171?
Right.
Okay, so we're nearing the permissible range of, in that particular area of the field.
That's correct.
Okay, that explains, I couldn't understand it, I appreciate that.
Okay, sure. And while, since we're talking about the field long up, there's a second characteristic of the field that's not necessarily addressed in this, and that is, if you looked at the turf before it was put down and before they added all the fill, basically you have grass, right? Well, over time, those grass blades from being run on and laid on and whatnot, those are decreasing as well. So, the field is, as it gets, that gets shorter, it loses its ability to hold on to the fill as well. So, there's two things at play. One is the impact, but also one is the ability for the, the grass to hold that fill in, so.
Well, I have one question on the field.
Sure.
I, I was hopeful in putting together a budget for another school, another field. It was done within, say, five years. And the whole project cost about 2.6.
Right.
That was base, that was the prep, the field, the leveling, conduit under the ground for, for stuff, and this, just the resurface is 1.2.
This, this project contains the track portion as well? Is that a total 1.0?
Resurfacing.
Resurfacing the track.
Resurfacing the track.
Right.
So it's not just a coating, it's, okay, all right.
Right, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Dan, thank you for asking that question. I looked at the chart and said, forget it.
Took me a minute or two, but, yeah, all right.
Good questions.
Anything else? Do we have any further questions? And if not, I think-
Appreciate your, your input.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Presentation, and it's very encouraging, the numbers from last year, so.
Yeah, we're much happier with where we're at. And, you know, again, that insurance number, we're going to watch that hopefully decrease. So I think that's going to save us some additional dollars as well.
Great.
So.
All right, I think-
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any concluding remarks from the chairman?
Concluding remarks?
Any advice for us?
Special thanks to Roseanne for all she does. Thanks so much, everyone.
So at this time, we're going to turn to item number three, which is budget reviews. And the first one we're going to review tonight will be section one-fifteen, Services to the Community.
I know, I- Oh, you've found the book?
Yeah, I brought my-
So. We, uh-
We're doing one-thirteen?
This is one-fifty.
One-fifty.
Services to Community. And, so, so right now, we haven't made any changes yet to this particular, uh-
Do you know if you cut down?
I see, I'm trying to see if there's any-
Hold on.
Unless we have an updated one.
Just pull up.
So we may have a new one. Yeah, I thought, yeah, that's what we're talking about, let's just see. I don't know if, uh-
Stand by for one second.
All right, so from the amended, okay, yeah. So. Yeah, so we, from the amended budget down, I'm sorry, it's on the wrong column. So we did reduce East Line Beautification, you can see where we reduced that.
What did you reduce yours to, Dan? Is it fifteen-hundred?
Yeah, to fifteen-hundred.
Okay.
So the twenty-twenty-four amended budget was seventeen, and so the proposed right now is fifteen-hundred. Family Services, it looks like that stayed the same.
Did you receive any kind of report from them, Dan?
It's a narrative.
A narrative?
There is, yeah, there should be a narrative.
Oh, I see it, I missed it, I'm sorry.
Can you guys see that a little better?
Yes.
Yes.
There we go, yeah.
Everything has gone down a hundred percent.
That's, that's not accurate, that's-
Some enrolleeing counting.
There you go, it's-
Yeah, so that's, uh-
Okay.
So, yeah, so the only reduction-
Is the beautification?
Is, yeah.
I think it was a two-hundred dollar cut to the-
Two-hundred.
EL beautification.
That was, yeah.
And just to let everyone know, it's no longer a not-for-profit, it is, that'll now be Niantic Main Street. So EL beautification has ceased, the nine-nineties no longer. So that, that'll be moved over to the Niantic Main Street program.
So that, all right, so line nine-on-one, that's going to go away, that item, East Line Beautification?
It's currently set at fifteen-hundred.
Right.
So there's two lines in here, I believe, for Niantic Main Street. So this would be the, you know, the, to beautify East Lime. And then down here, there's a different two thousand dollars for their other-
For Main Street.
Correct, yeah. So from what I've, from what I've gathered, talking to some of the volunteers, it sounds like Niantic Main Street was doing the work and then submitting an invoice to the EL beautification to be paid. It sounds like someone from the EL beautification can no longer, is no longer volunteering there. And so, you know, that's kind of closed up shop and been all absorbed into the Niantic Main Street program.
So will that fifteen-hundred end up at, at the Niantic Main Street?
Correct.
So they'll really be getting thirty-five-hundred?
Correct.
Okay, all right, just to be clear.
But I just, I left them separate this year because there's, you know, I, I'm not sure quite what that two thousand dollars is spent for, but I don't want to combine them and-
Just keep them separate.
That's how I-
Yeah, okay, just for tracking purposes.
But now, next year, there'll be a combined?
There will be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, unless they designate a specific, you know, two programs that they're spending the money on.
They might, they may want to break it out.
Yeah, and if that's the case, we can, you know, break it out that way.
Okay, the Youth Coalition Scholarship, so that's just a wash because it originally appeared in another budget, Youth and Family Services?
I'm not, let's see, that's nine-thirty-four?
Yeah. Because we didn't previously have a request-
Right, we didn't have a line item.
And I don't recall seeing the reduction in Youth and Family Services unless I missed it.
There, I believe there was one. So that was, when, when the first selectman had our initial budget meeting with Youth and Family Services Director, we went through line by line, the Supplies miscellaneous expense account, and we identified that two thousand dollars, and we thought the better place for it to be was the Services of the Community line. Similarly with the East Line Police Cadets. I actually ran into Sergeant Holbauer at Family Pizza and was talking to him about the Services of the Community. We got talking about that, and so then he sent a, a letter in for that as well.
So they're new, this is your bottom two?
Those, the bottom two are new.
Yeah.
The, the Youth Coalition Scholarship, it sounds like that has been being paid, that was paid, it sounds like from the, maybe the Parker Act Special Revenue Line as years prior. But we, once we identified there was a scholarship somewhere else besides the Services of the Community line, we moved it to the spot.
So it's clear and it's easier, easier to track. And then, and then the note does explain it on the bottom, doesn't say nine-thirty-three, but right below it, Urban Society Coalition. Okay, so thanks, please. Any, any discussion?
Well, this is the East Line, the Police Cadets, nonprofit organization, annual contribution. So now, that, that is, that's new. No? Yes?
Yes.
That's new, and- There's the Family Services, okay?
Any other commentary on this section? All right, then, if there's none, then let's move to section one-eighteen.
And I just want to say real quick, before we move to the next section, if, if anyone's out there in the community and you approached me about a service in the community and I forgot it, just send me an email, because I feel like I'm missing one, I thought there was three, I, I just couldn't find the third one. So if I find that, I'll email you all and just let you know there's a third one, if there is. But I couldn't find it in my emails.
On one-fifteen, should we get?
On one-fifteen, I thought there was, I thought there was three this year. So I see the Youth Coalition, the East Line Cadets, I don't know what the third one was, if there was one. I could just, you know, spend too much time looking at these numbers. But if there is one, I'll let you know, and we can, you know, it'll have to be addressed because this has already been submitted, so. But just to let you know, in case, you know, the next day or two I come forward and say, oh, I forgot this one.
Could it be the Blue Door or the Giving Garden, which also were zeros last year?
No, no, those were new last year. Blue Door, nine-twenty-one, and then nine-twenty-three, those were new as of last year. So those are the two we added, there might have been three last year. The Veterans Rep, I believe, was new as well, the six thousand dollars for the Veterans Rep. So that every town has to have a, a Veterans representative for, you know, various matters. And ours does a lot with our veterans in town and drives them to West Haven and Newington, I believe, are the two VAs in the area. And that's like a hundred-and-twenty miles round trip.
Yeah.
So he does a lot of driving and a couple of other things for the, for the veterans.
Is Karen Sharon, is that, should, I don't see Karen Sharon here, does that show up somewhere else or we don't?
I don't believe we, if we give them actual dollars, I don't know.
Okay, so we give them in kind?
Yeah, I don't think they actually get any, this is the only, these are the only not-for-profits and, you know, agencies we give to, that I, that I can recall.
Yeah, we give them space.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, then, otherwise we'll turn to section one-eighteen, and that's Finance.
I have a little presentation, naturally. Okay, I'll try to keep it short because I see we're short on time here. So some things the Finance Office has accomplished in the last, so when I started in August of twenty-twenty-two, everyone was filing their time sheets on carbon copy paper, didn't know that still existed. The white, the yellow, and the pink, and I didn't know what to do with the three copies. So I have no idea what to do with those things. Someone's reconciling them somewhere in the ethos, but, so we implemented Nova Time. We implemented that last February, so that's been about a year now implemented. Besides having employees clock in, clock out, this takes care of geofencing for some of the summer seasonal help down Park and Rec. The Public Works guys use this. So we're moving to the twentieth century, not the twenty, not the twenty-second century, but, you know, two thousand and five, I'm trying to get us updated to. So Nova Time, time and attendance. With banking, we've implemented positive payments in our bank accounts. When I started here in August twenty-twenty-two, a couple of months prior, the town was hit with a fraud incident to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars. We just got our first one-hundred-dollar check to pay that back, so ninety-six years from now, we will be made whole. And just restructuring the bank accounts. We had a lot of accounts that were, we had a couple of million dollars sitting in checking accounts. We did have, before I started, the town did have a relationship with the state of Connecticut using the STIF bank account, a short-term investment fund. But our banks that we have, we have a bank locally here in a, I'll refrain from naming the bank just so we don't get any more fraud alerts. But it's ridiculous. So we've implemented zero-balance bank accounts. So when you look at our checking account, it says zero. All the money is sitting in an investment account. So, over the last couple, last couple of years here, this year, we're projecting, we're going to be over one-point-two million dollars in investment earnings. We budgeted about six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, I think, so we're going to double it. Last couple of years, we were collecting very insignificant investment earnings. And I know there was a period of, you know, zero interest for a little bit there, but I think we could have collected a little more if we utilized zero-balanced, zero, zero-based banking. So, a couple of other things, just want to talk about purchase cards. So now, instead of people swiping their personal cards, the town has a purchase card program through the state of Connecticut, JP Morgan. So a lot of our directors have purchase cards. So in the event of an emergency, they can run out, buy things on a tax-exempt purchase card. And then the Board of Ed spoke on this earlier, implementing Munis with the, in collaboration with the Board of Ed. This is a huge feat, this has been going on since twenty-eighteen. And so with the help of Mariana Stevens and the Board of Ed, we're going to see this come to fruition July one of this year. That's a, that's a huge deal, it's been going on for six, seven years here. We talked about the investment earnings, ongoing discussions that are coming out of the Finance Office, establishing a grant fund, a capital improvement committee, eventually OPEB trust. And last week, we had our first meeting on the Coastal Resiliency Fund. So we're, we're just trying to build out some of the, some of the organizational elements of the Finance Office. Some things that this board hasn't been apprised of yet, the financial statements. Since, we have not filed a financial statement on time since twenty-thirteen. So that's been, that's over a decade, and we're trying to change that practice. March of twenty-twenty-three, we were able to file the fiscal year twenty-one audit. We are currently working right now with our auditors to file twenty-twenty-two, hopefully by either the end of the month or the first week of April. Once we get that audit done, we will work towards getting the twenty-twenty-three audit done, hopefully by August, and then turn around the twenty-twenty-four audit, somewhere January, February timeframe, to get us on track on being, finally on time, to get these audits filed in a timely manner. So why are we talking about those audits and the, and the delays? Really, that comes down to staffing in the Finance Office. Every year, the auditors speak before the Board of Finance. The last meeting they had was August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And then about twenty-eight minutes in, you can hear the recommendations to increase the staffing of the Finance Office. And if you've watched any of the Board of Selectmen meetings, Board of Finance meetings over the last year, you've known I used that to hire the Deputy Finance Director slash Purchasing Agent Mitch Nixon, who's been with us for a couple of months now. So the Finance Office, we are trying to, I am trying to staff it a little more, but I think once we get caught up on the audits, we get done with our Munis implementation, we might, we'll definitely be able to turn over, right now, we just contracted two weeks ago, an external accountant to work about twenty-four hours a week to get us caught up on these audits. The audits are a priority, and they're, they're the, they're the drain on the Finance Office resources right now at the moment. So part of the proposal is thirty-six thousand dollars for the external accountant, as well as, I believe there was a little bit there, it might be in that thirty-six thousand dollars for the part-time senior accountant. That's a position we've had for about a decade. The idea was to convert that person to the Deputy Finance Director role, but she hasn't quite retired yet. So she still comes in three days a month to assist with bank reconciliations and the tax collector reconciliations, while the Deputy Finance Director's working on Munis implementation and helping with the audits. So we're not looking to add anyone to the, to the Finance Office, just to get this temporary external accountant in here and, and just produce a better product. So, so thank you.
So when you say external accountant, I'm assuming this is like an independent consultant?
Correct, and, yeah, ten-nine contractor.
What is OPEB?
Other post-employment benefits. So when you retire, we don't offer it now, but for a period of time, employees that retired after a certain number of years here, they were eligible for employment, you know, health insurance, medical benefits for life. So that has stopped, but we have to still, you know, there's a bunch of employees that are grandfathered into that, into that.
So you have a trust to manage that.
Correct, yeah, I think our, last I checked, I believe our liability was in the three-to-four million dollar range, and it's under, it's unfunded, so we're just paying as you go. So, yeah, next month, I will come before the Board separately to, to talk about pension stuff. The Pension Board is going to present to the Board of Selectmen, and I'll be the, the vector of that. So in that conversation, we can also kind of piggyback and talk about OPEB as well.
Got it.
And establishing a trust for that.
Thanks.
So one more question for me. You're trying to file, you said the twenty-twenty-two audit and then to try to get on track, correct?
Correct.
Does this then impact our bond rating? Because that-
It can very well impact our bond rating, yes.
I'm assuming it's going to be in a positive-
If we get this, if we get this, if we get this in, our bond rating will not be impacted because we have the second highest-tier bond we can have. This is really a, do you want to get knocked down a peg? That's the question here, it's, it's maintaining what we have, right? Because we have a very good bond rating, we're double-A.
Even though we haven't been filing these audits-
They've still, so the timeliness of the audit is one aspect of it, you know, the fiscal health of the community, the, there's so many different-
Do they look at all different factors?
Correct, yeah, we're, we're a pretty healthy fiscal community, it's just a matter of the timeliness of the audits. Getting these filed on time is one of the, one of the, you know, requirements.
Okay, great, thank you.
And if I may add, you know, Kevin has really done some significant things helping us with not only the bond rating, but also the investing of the money, the return on the money that was just sitting there. You saw that graph before, which was really impressive. But, you know, bond rating is crucial for keeping our costs down to borrow money into the future. And some of the features that this represents is getting these audits completed. And I've sat in at some of those meetings with the state of Connecticut, and it's, it can be pretty onerous. And I want to say Kevin's done a wonderful job in, in satisfying their concerns. It could have been a lot worse. It could have been a lot worse. They could have put us on a, what, a monthly audit stream?
They could have put us on a watch list.
A watch list. And we've avoided that, and I think by hiring this other accountant and, and taking the steps that we needed to take and really focusing on it, we're going to get out of harms way. And, and we will, we will eventually be in pretty good stead with the state of Connecticut on these audits. And, but it wouldn't have happened without Kevin's really extreme effort on this. And the other thing is the coastal resiliency fund that we started, that was another aspect of our, of our budget that the bond raters look at. And they want to see that for coastal towns that we have, that we're starting to save some money as a contingency if there's a coastal storm type event. And we already suffered one this year. So we're starting to move in the right direction on several different fronts. And so I'm very pleased about that. So this budget, I think, is, is money well spent.
So the two, two objectives that the S and P Rating Agency gave the town, a coastal resiliency plan, this was before the wall collapsed. And then the other one was an OPEB trust. Start discussing, having discussions about formulating an OPEB trust. So those two things, we really need to spearhead. So hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll have a coastal resiliency plan. In the budget, we'll talk about next, the contingency line. We'll talk about the coastal resiliency money we have set aside. So it all, you know, it's just pieces of the puzzle we're putting together.
They're all starting to come together.
Yep.
Dan, is that our money we put aside? Is that, is that coming from the state or feds, the coastal resiliency money?
That's our money.
It's our money. So we, we create.
It's our piggy bank for the rainy day, for rainy day for that.
A separate rainy day, an assigned rainy day fund for a specific cause.
Perfect.
Could you go back to line two thirteen, the senior accountant consultant? So in two thousand and twenty-three, we had that position filled at a salary of thirteen thousand, which I think was a part-time position.
Eight hours a month.
Yeah. And then who did the work in two thousand and twenty-four when there was no budget there? When it was zero, who did the work then?
It, there was one, so the finance office has had one accountant. It all, you know, it all funnels to the finance director. There's three clerks, that senior accountant that works eight hours a month, sixteen hours a month on a, a good month. So really, there was a, there's a tremendous bottleneck. And there still is a little bit of a bottleneck, but the neck got a little bigger when I was able to bring in Mr. Nixon to help out. So it's really just about delegating, assigning tasks, and getting things closed and moved forward. You know, the last audit was filed on time in two thousand and thirteen, so over the last ten years, I think it's been a fire drill. What's on fire, put it out, move on to the next fire. And I think that went on for a decade.
Okay, so the thirty-six thousand, that is for a, is that for a part-time position?
That is for this senior accountant slash consultant. So between the two of those, that the thirty-six thousand there will hopefully fund a, a senior accountant for approximately, you know, five, six, seven, eight hours a month. It's really just to help out with tax reconciliations. Those are, if you can imagine, you know, the town, seventy-five million dollars comes in, one bank account hits one line item that has to get reconciled every month. That in itself can take a day or two. And really, it just comes down to, you know, day-to-day management of the staff and having time to lock yourself in an office with no distractions for eight hours to, to get that reconciliation done.
You mean like my office?
Yeah.
No distractions?
Yeah, no distractions. No one comes in there ever.
Nothing's going.
Well, you need to get one of those restricted signs for your door.
So just another quick question. On the three eleven, it says accounts clerk slash fiscal assistant, one hundred and eighty thousand, is that for, how many people is that?
Those are three clerks.
Okay.
So if we go to, let me just shut this off for a quick, just want to make sure there's nothing. Yeah. So it's, it all ties out to the. So it just ties out to the, the three, the three clerks in my office.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any, any further comments or questions about section one eighteen? Okay. Mark it. Now we're on to one, one twenty contingency. So let's see. We already talked a little bit about the coastal resiliency fund.
Do these numbers match up? I, I have them, I didn't look at contingency.
Yeah.
They do match up, okay. So I know we went back and forth with the coastal resiliency fund.
Yeah, so we're, so we're at twenty-five thousand for the coastal resiliency fund. The OPEB trust contribution, again, it's a start.
Yeah.
That's ten thousand. And then I think we reduced the general contingency down to two fifty. We were at three hundred, now it's at two fifty. And I think we probably moved that around a little bit to distribute it to coastal and OPEB.
So you're just shifting some money from the general conti, conti.
Well, we had, we, yeah, we had a, we, let's see, we had three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Well, in two thousand and twenty-four, we had two hundred thousand. And I think we're a little bit more ambitious than we really could afford. So we, we, we moved that down to two hundred and fifty thousand for the contingency.
What does that actually cover?
Do you want to address that?
Sure, so, the, the, so do you want to just walk down, we can walk through the whole thing real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Can I go first line down?
Yeah.
So the very first line there, the payroll pending contingency. Initially, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It got cut back to two twenty after we, I did a little calculation on the backend. The majority of that money is for the non-affiliateds. You know, throughout the budget process, they've been presented a zero percent budget for the non-affiliated salaries. This money is, a portion of this money is set aside for the non-affiliateds for their salary adjustments come seven one. There's, there's some other things that there's money aside for, some shift in staffing behind the scenes to the tune of about thirty thousand. So the majority of that money is for non-affiliated salary adjustments. And there's three members of the Board of Selectmen that are, are sitting on that panel, or whatever you want to call it, to kind of give that recommendation. Coastal resiliency, we talked about. OPEB trust, the ten thousand there is really just a placeholder. We don't have a number yet because we haven't had an actuarially determined study yet for that one. So that is truly a placeholder. But any contribution, you know, it should be noted that any contribution to the plan that we make gets noted in the actuarially determined yearly report. So as long as we're putting something in that's better than putting nothing in. So, you know, something's better than nothing in that instance. And then with the salary, the actual town-wide contingency, that covers anything else outside of those fourth, or those three things above it. So the fire truck, when the fire truck broke down, forty thousand dollars, that we, we, we hit that line item. The seawall went down, the initial twenty-five was there. Another thing that's going to come before you next month, the dock that floated on the beach. That was seven thousand dollars that the town absorbed. That's going to come out of contingency. All these little one-offs, those come out of contingency if they don't have a, a spot in the budget already.
It's our emergency money.
Correct, yep.
You can't, you're town or size, you can't count on every penny being identified.
So the contingencies as a total should equal at least half a percent of the budget. If we're talking ninety-two million dollars, that's roughly what our budget is. I think it's four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So as long as we cover. Oh, boy. Pretty good there. Point zero five. So this is what best practice says we should have in contingency, and we have a little more than that. This is going too high. Standby. Standby, one more zero. Not four million. There we go, four hundred and sixty thousand. So between the, the seller contingency and the, you know, town-wide contingency, we should be looking at at least four hundred and sixty thousand. Ideally, this three hundred thousand would be the four hundred and sixty thousand. This is not the budget here to do that. So at least we're building it up. So even if we do fifty thousand a year, in the next couple of years, we will get to where we're supposed to be. Because we're also, not only are we building this contingency, we're building cash capital. So there's multiple pain points in this budget. We kind of have to balance, right?
And I think we talked about that concept before a little bit, of the cash capital and the capital plan as well.
I just have to log out of this program real quick. I'm going to get yelled at.
Okay. Any other questions on the contingency? All right, we'll backtrack now to section one fourteen. And that is the general government and benefits.
All right. Do we want to, do you want, do you want me to walk through it real quick, and then any questions?
I think that'd be wise if you could.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
So the Medicare number is, sorry, the FICA Medicare number, seven point six five percent of the overall wages of the town. That is calculated at the bottom of our, oh, sorry, hold on here. Our giant spreadsheet, if you go right to the bottom. At the very bottom here. Nine hundred and eighty. Are they all blank? Does everyone have one? So Jason, before you leave, I'll print you, I'll print you one. I don't know what happened there. So I have nine, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars that we should have, nine seventy-eight rounding, round, you know, this is rounding, we're talking about a million dollars. So that's where I come up with our Medicare number. Going to, get out of there. Workers' compensation, this is a flat three and a half percent year-over-year. We signed a contract with Kerma for the liability auto property, as well as workers' comp. Doesn't go up by more than three and a half percent for the next three years, I believe it is. So that's locked in. Pension, this should be really named pension slash retirement. It is not strictly just pension. The calculation also takes into consideration the non-affiliated retire, the retirement. So non-affiliateds down here, roughly about four million dollars of salary, we pay seven percent in, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, excuse me, that's just part of the calculation there for, it's, it's not just pension, so it's really mislabeled. It's pension slash retirement. So I just wanted to, everyone to know that. All right? And yes, I did pad that by eleven thousand dollars. The general fund's six thirty-nine. But I prefer to have a little cushion there, not, not be right to the penny there. So life insurance, I don't think, you can see years prior, sixteen thousand, I don't think this was calculated appropriately the last couple of years. So it's on target, it's not forty-four percent increase. If you look at two thousand and twenty-three actuals, I just think it was never properly budgeted. Same with this one a little bit, light, long-term disability. I mean, the actual's twenty thousand, three fifty-three. The year after, we budget eighteen, so we're going to true that up there and budget it correctly. Health insurance, this number is going to come down. This has a, it's not five and a half percent. I think this had a four percent budget increase. We just got the data back today, two percent. So this number will be, will come down significantly. That'll be a great savings.
That'll really help.
Yeah, that's over, I mean, that's over a hundred thousand.
That's incredible.
That's great.
That'll really help out our bottom line. I didn't have time to calculate that, but I, but I'll get back to that for you guys. Retirement liability. Just so everyone's aware, the non-affiliateds, well, all the, you know, different collective bargaining units have different levels of a payout when they retire. For the non-affiliateds, since we're not in the pension, there's no opportunity to convert sick days into pensionable earnings, like some of the other unions. So we, so the non-affiliateds really, certain individuals that have been here a significant period of time, they've accumulated thousands of hours, literally, of sick time vacation, personal, comp time. So, and when I say thousands, the only thousand you see is when you hit sick time. We allow sick time to roll up to fifteen hundred hours. So, and we have to pay out forty-five percent of that, I believe it is, for sick time for non-affiliated. There's a, there's a, don't quote me, but it's a significant amount of money. So our retirement, let me see if I have it here, is about a million dollars, our liability. I don't, it has individuals' names. If you want to see it offhand, I can show it to you guys offline. But it's, it's over a million dollars. So every year, I mean, last year, we spent one hundred and ninety-four thousand. So two hundred thousand, I think, is, is conservative, but I think we can manage. So. Does anyone have any questions about personnel services before we get into legal?
That sick time accumulates thirty-eight weeks.
Yep. It's, yeah, I think we pay out a hundred days. So I think they can carry a hundred and fifty days over, and we pay out seventy-five. So we pay out seven, yeah, it's, it's a significant number. I'll, I can, I'll show you, I can show you offline.
If they're throwing all that sick time, then they're great employees and they're coming to work, right?
That is true.
Which is great.
All right, so as everyone all set with personnel, we'll move on to legal. So legal lines, we, we keep money set aside for transcripts if anything has to be transcribed. Legal ads. Last year, we spent over the budget. We spent almost twenty-four thousand dollars. I think, last year, we also had the charter revision committee that was in there, so I think we can reduce that a little bit. But I still think we're going to, you know, price of legal ads are just going through the roof. Same with the, you know, just all the legal expenses are, were, were a little heightened last year, especially because we absorbed charter revision, right?
Is there a way for legal ads, if they can just go like, like online instead of, you know?
You, you would think, but those journal, you know, the, the newspapers have quite a lobby. And so you are not going to, that's been tried so many times to just say, okay, well, if you, if your Facebook page has ten percent of your residents, right? If you get a certain circulation, that should be allowed, and they're just, they just shoot down every.
Okay, thank you.
So there is slight increases to like the general government legal line by twenty thousand dollars, so that's roughly ten thousand dollars a month. If you, you know, one hundred and twenty divided by the twelve months. Zoning, we, you know, zoning's been creeping up. And then labor, we have a couple of contracts that are coming up that we need to start negotiating. UPSU comes up at the end of this budget cycle, as well as one other, maybe police. So this is, this is money well spent, CYA. So anyone have any questions on legal? Okay. We'll go down to just some of these other other expenses.
Why is money gone for, or the police accreditation, has that gone into their budget?
I don't believe he needs the legal funds anymore for that. He sent me an email, but he didn't need it. I think this was for legal services. He's absorbed, you know, he has other things on his, on the police side they have to do that aren't legal service-related that he's absorbed in his budget. So. Unemployment compensation, town municipalities are a little different than, you know, regular businesses. Here, we pay one-to-one. So when we have an employee that's been terminated and they're, they're eligible for unemployment insurance, we pay them out one-to-one. So there's that. The evictions has gone down a little bit. Last year, we bought a storage container. So we're hoping not to spend any of that money. That's really just a placeholder in case any supplies or anything needs to come up. Checking indices, that is a town clerk function. We have a, a company that comes in and makes sure everything's filed properly and, and all that fun stuff. And then the insurance, PD and L, that is our LAP insurance, the liability auto protection, that is also up to three and a half percent there. That is what they, they quoted us. You know, that's the contract we signed. And then two new two new expenses this year we're adding to the budget. Cybersecurity insurance, and we've had conversations with the Board of Ed, Dan Clear, IT Director here, about getting cybersecurity insurance. The twenty-five thousand, even the ten thousand's more of a placeholder. We're not quite sure what it costs because in order to get a quote, you have to satisfy every one of the requirements. We currently don't satisfy every one of the requirements, they won't give us a number. So it's just this negative feedback loop of trying to get a number, so that, the ten thousand's a placeholder. Same with this active assailant insurance. A couple of months ago, I met with our, our insurance company, Kerma. A couple of months ago, I met with our, our, um, insurance company, Kirma, um, and something they're offering is this active assailant insurance. Um, it covers a wide range of things, there's certain thresholds, the $5,000, I believe is about a million dollars in coverage. It covers everything, I mean, it's a pretty robust coverage. Um, if there's any sort of incident in any building, uh, they come in, they'll assist with moving, um, any sort of, um, support you need, uh, press, I mean, the, it's, it's pretty robust for $5,000. So, um, you know, in conversation with, with the First Selectmen, we thought it was a no-brainer to have a million dollars of coverage in case there's an emergency, you know, some sort of incident that happens anywhere in town, and we have a million dollars of coverage.
Grim thought, but we have to have that.
Um, unemployment, uh, employment assistance, that's our EAP. Um, next year, that'll probably get moved under HR. Uh, and then professional development, we increased, so 70% of the town's budget is staffing, right? Unless they have something specific in their budgets for staffing, for, uh, training, conferences, you know, unless they have a couple hundred bucks, three, $400, there's no money anywhere in this budget to train 70% of our budget, that, you know, the biggest part of our, uh, our operating. So we doubled it from 2,700 to $5,000. So if someone has an ask, if they want to go to a, a specific training, a seminar, if the HR department wants to put something on, um, we have some funds available to bring in a speaker, bring in a, you know, someone to train the staff.
Doesn't each department, though, usually put in for training? Isn't that part of?
They do, but some of them have $200, $400, if they want something outside of that, which is, I mean, if you ask these departments, what, what do you want to go to versus what's in your budget? It's, you know, they're, they're two, that's two different questions.
Okay.
So I think this gives the First Selectmen a little more, um, flexibility. So someone can go to him and say, hey, I'd like to take this class, it's a couple hundred bucks, I don't have it in my budget. We, we have a line for that, so we don't have to hit contingency.
Okay.
Um, the, the line below that, uh, CCOG, that's our Southeastern Council of Governments, I don't know what CRED stands for, and CCM is our Connecticut Conference Municipalities. And I believe also SEAT is in there as well. Our, um, our payment to SEAT. Um, I don't know what that CRED one is, but.
Yeah. But they put in a lot of programs and.
Yeah, it's probably Council of Regional Education Development or something.
SEAT, the, like, the bus company, is that?
You, we have to pay for them to be in town, driving around.
Sure.
You pay your fair share, just like all the streetlights. Every streetlight that's in town here, we pay that bill. So streetlights, yes, yep. That was new to me. Um, I was like, wow, we pay for every streetlight in town, huh? Someone has to foot the bill.
All the towns that are part of SEAT, they get assessed a certain amount.
Oh, okay.
Their budget and, uh.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's by capita, or by, it's probably by population. There's a whole spreadsheet they send me.